Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Greider.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
And Mr. Vois.
Here.
All right, thank you. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? All right, thank you. Please join me in the pledge, which will be led by Ward III Councilmember, Nia Wilder.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. We are adding, sorry, we're removing items thirty-one and thirty-two on the consent agenda, and there was a change on the consent agenda, item number thirty-three, as well as the approval of minutes of the October sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three council regular session as proposed.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have an agenda. First item on the agenda is to do a couple proclamations, and the first one being National Injury Prevention Day. So could, who's joining? All right, so we will start off with the proclamation, and then we'll do some introductions and have you make a couple comments. All right, City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas injury prevention, not apprenticeship, right? That was close. All right, City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas injuries are the leading cause of death and disability to U.S. children ages one to eighteen. And whereas the City of Waterloo is committed to creating a safe environment contributing to the safety and well-being of our children. And whereas an estimated fifty-four percent of gun owners don't lock all of their guns securely, and an estimated, and it's estimated that four-point-six million children live in a home with at least one unlocked and loaded gun. And whereas almost every single day, a child gets their hands on a gun and unintentionally kills or injures themselves or someone else in the U.S. And whereas research shows that the best way to protect children and teens from assessing guns is to implement secure firearm storage practices. And whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is the mayor's highest responsibilities. And whereas, and I'll add council, and whereas hospitals, state agencies, and community organizations are committed to the crucial role in reducing injuries and deaths by promoting safe practices. And whereas National Injury Prevention Day raises awareness and promotes efforts to reduce injuries among children. Now therefore, I, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim November eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three as National Injury Prevention Day. So that's a lot. So please tell us more and introduce yourself to everyone.
Hi, I'm Kristen Stanford, and I am a part of the Moms Demand Action Local Cedar Valley Group. And the Be Smart program is really important. Guns are the second-leading cause of death of children in Iowa. And it's time that we stand up and we do something about it in our communities.
So the Be Smart program educates adults to make sure that they are securing guns safely. Securing safe storage means locking it up in a lockbox separate from ammunition. Making sure that we model appropriate behavior as adults, that we are asking about firearms in the homes that our children visit. And we are recognizing the role of guns in suicide, and that we're telling others to be smart too. I'm Jamie Overhoy.
Hi, I'm Ashley Partee with Moms Demand Action as well. I volunteer.
I'm Lauren Scriber, and I also volunteer as well.
And I'm Liz Conglin. I'm also a volunteer here, and I think as moms and grandmothers, the most important thing to us really is to keep our kids safe, and that's what we're all about.
You know, earlier, earlier during our work session, we had the Waterloo Safe Neighborhood Task Force. And we talked about different things that we may be able to do within the community from the recommendations from the task force. But I think even taking a step back from the task force, maybe an easy way to limit some of those numbers is to do exactly what you ladies are talking about, exactly what the proclamation talks about, and that is making sure that in our homes, that our guns are securely locked up so that our young people may not be able to access them. So I just want to say thank you so much for taking a stand. Thank you so much for being active and being accessible. We just pray for your continued success because it has an impact on all of us. So thank you so much for all your efforts. All right, it is National Apprenticeship Week. Who's going to come up to join? How are you, sir? Sorry about the left hand. All right, City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas National Apprenticeship Week is celebrating its ninth anniversary of raising awareness of the vital role registered apprenticeships provides in creating opportunities by allowing apprentices, apprentices, to earn while they learn, and preparing a pathway to good-quality jobs and well-paying careers in Waterloo and across the nation. And whereas registered apprenticeship programs enable employers to develop and train their future workforce while offering career seekers affordable paths to secure high-paying jobs. And whereas Waterloo recognizes the role of registered apprenticeship and expanding opportunities in our workforce that are inclusive of individuals who have been historically underserved, marginalized, and adversely affected by persistent poverty and inequality, thus providing a path for all qualified individuals, including youth, people of color, rural communities, women. And just as involved individuals and individuals with disabilities to become apprentices and contribute to American industries. And whereas Waterloo recognized the registered apprenticeship, a proven and industry-driven training model is a key strategy to improving job quality and creating access to good-paying, family-sustaining jobs for all, starting with youth and young adults while addressing some of our nation's pressing workforce challenges such as rebuilding our country's infrastructure, addressing critical supply chain demands, supporting a clean energy workforce, modernizing our cybersecurity response, and responding to care economy issues. Now therefore, I, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim and declare on November thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three through November nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three, as National Apprenticeship Week. So please tell us more about this occasion.
I'm Jerry Orr from Hawkeye Community College. We were one of the leading community colleges in the state of Iowa when it comes to apprenticeships. We partner with a lot of local businesses to help their employees. So next week is National Apprenticeship Week, and we're going to celebrate our successes and look for new opportunities. And I thank Mayor Hart and the City of Waterloo for the proclamation.
And Jerry, thank you so much for all your efforts in Hawkeye Community College. And one of our twenty-thirty vision plan goals is Waterloo Works because the council and the rest of our entire city want to make it that the City of Waterloo has one of the most trained and prepared workforces, not just in the state of Iowa, but across this nation. And I was fortunate enough to go out to Hawkeye maybe a week or so ago for what the work you're doing with CDLs and go to the manufacturing four-point-oh and all the great efforts and work that you are doing. So we want to thank you. We want to thank our labor force. We want to thank all of you that are out there every day trying to make sure that we have the best and most prepared workforce which impacts their life and their quality of life. So thank you, sir. All right. All right, it is now time for oral presentations. Your opportunity to address the city council, mayor, and staff on non-agenda-related items. So please come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the records, and let us know your thoughts.
I'm Aaron Stacy Roberts, and I had just delivered, I think all of you city council members got a copy of the letters that I gave you. The one is just a letter addressing to you my concerns and how something is not, statute has not outran in the sexual assault that I spoke on a couple weeks ago. The second letter is from a notable attorney. He's a prosecutor, I would imagine, in his time gave away a couple hundred years. Dave Dutton. I want you to pay particular attention to the date on that, which is January fourteenth of ninety-nine. The third copy would be from Blank Children's Hospital. The date on that would be June twenty-first of ninety-nine, a few months after the contact with John Deere about the life insurance policy that's mentioned in this case nine-nine-one-four-six-one-two, which is a sexual assault considered a kidnapping and rape because at the time that my daughter wanted to leave the restroom in Urban Dale, at Urban Dale High School, that became a kidnapping when she wanted to walk out of that room. The penetration by the finger became the rape. That day, I went and we went to Blank Children's Hospital, as you see. I also called the Urban Dale Police out before I went there. That's the nine-nine-one-four-six-one-two. When you speak about not looking back over something that took place forty years ago, I don't have a forty-year-old child. The report has to be filed within a time. Had any of the administrations over the last, since ninety-nine, looked and listened to my concerns, they would know that. It wouldn't even be mentioned about a statute of limitation. There's another issue here which involves the farmland in Buchanan County. I have a court date for December twenty-first. I am the administrator over that. I had to get it back open after farmland was sold, and I believe in retaliation along with the nine-nine case. That's just my belief. But the facts are, once I became the administrator, I found out every check that was wrote to the family was a thousand dollars short. One person doesn't even know who cashed his check. So I have some legal concerns as the administrator. This is not a case that's in the past. This is ongoing. I have a court date. Every check was wrote in Waterloo, Iowa, and went through other than one in Monseano, Nevada, or out of state, went through U.S. Bank, who was holding the money in Waterloo right across the bridge. Janet Primer, who wrote the checks, is from Waterloo. So this is something that Waterloo should have a concern with. Another problem that I have with the City of Waterloo is the MHO case where Dan Treckel, some lady named Sharice Atkins, red-flagged me in twenty-thirteen, and I never met the lady before in my life. I ask that you look into my concerns.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Of course. I'm Mary Potter. Fourteen sixteen West Fourth is my office. I'm a trustee with Grouse Museum. And I'm here again, and I have passed out to you all a membership form that we would love to have you fill in. We have a very special thing in Waterloo. We have a Sullivan's Museum, and that, when you drive by it, you see the big airplane and all the other things. It's a really a very special thing in Waterloo, and we are one of the very few places that have this. And so right now, we need some donations, and we need some memberships. And we are doing what we can to make this more acceptable to you, more pleasant, something that you're going to really say, I'm willing to give something up to see this museum grow and stay here. I passed you out a piece of red paper. It is red paper. It is not printed in red, so it's only one penny. But on it, it says that there is a Veterans Night Out, Honor Courage Commitment. The date is November tenth of this week. The time is from six till ten-thirty. And the location is at Sullivan Brothers Veterans Museum, which is the Grouse Museum. And the attire, it says on here, is semi-formal, no jeans. Bring a toy for Toys for Tots campaign. You can get a photo onsite for ten dollars. This museum does a lot to help veterans. We are nationally known as a veterans museum. And it is well worth your dollars to buy a membership to support us in one way or the other. And I will be here, as I said, every time you have a council meeting till you all join. And I hope that you will really think hard about if we didn't have this museum. What are the things in our city that we're willing to give up? Are we willing to give up people that will come to visit because they want to see the museum, but it's not here? Are we going to affect tourism? Are we going to keep children from coming to their third-grade museum visits? Are those the things that we have to give up if we do not have enough funding? I invite you all to attend, to read this over, and to think hard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, council members, staff, my name is Dan Treck. I live at one-seventy-three Grace Lane Boulevard in Waterloo. I'm on the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors, and I'm here with the encouragement of the Board of Supervisors. We haven't taken formal action on this issue, but we have discussed it. We would like to explore a partnership with the City of Waterloo. The county has a need for an evidence processing building. The City of Waterloo does as well. Chief Leibold and I have spoken a couple times about this issue. The largest user of this facility would be Waterloo. And we're just looking for a tangible investment from the City of Waterloo, and our vision is in a downtown area, property and/or a building that the county could refurbish, or a lot where we could build a building. And the City of Waterloo already has personnel who man this facility, and we could come up with some sort of a written agreement where the county basically funds it, and we work together for the benefit of all the taxpayers. After I leave this meeting, I'm going to go over to Cedar Falls and ask them to join in as well. I'm confident we can make this happen with the City of Waterloo and eventually bring in the City of Cedar Falls. All of our small communities in the county would use this generally as well because the sheriff's office tends to be the investigative arm for our smaller cities. So I have the board's blessing, encouragement, and we just want to work together with our cities and see what we can accomplish for the betterment of all. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you Supervisor Treck. We did have a brief text exchange about it, and I did have an opportunity to talk to Chief Leibold. So there'll be further discussion. We'll work with the council. Any opportunities to partner with the county, of course, we're looking forward to that as well. So we'll have more conversation, but thank you for being here this evening, sir.
Have a good night.
You too.
Hello, my name is Bob Manning. I am the executive director of the Cedar Valley Home Builders Association. And tomorrow is a great day in Waterloo, Iowa. We're opening up sixty-four residential lots surrounding Orange School in a new development. That's been hit and miss and up and down for the last five and a half years, and it's finally going to happen. And I've been asked to invite any of the public to that event tomorrow at eleven-thirty. It will be off just off of Kimball Avenue, north of the school. There'll be a paved street there that you'll see. And because this is such a fantastic, tremendous opportunity for the citizens of Waterloo to have new housing, especially VGM is excited about this. Covenant Hospital is excited about this. It provides some potential new housing for places close to where they can be employed. And certainly, the home builders are very excited about this also. So thank you to the mayor and the council for the work that you've done. You've been an integral part of this over the years, and we appreciate what you've done, and certainly your staff has been also. Some guy in a green shirt over there has especially been super involved, and so if you're going to wear a green shirt, we're going to point you out. So thank you very much.
Is that really green? Is that like forest green, or is it? Oh, my goodness. Thank you, Bob. Thank you for your diligence in this. I remember years ago, first having the meetings, trying to like pitch the idea to make something happen. So glad to see some dirt moving so we can try to make this incredible. And also, the council knows, you know, our twenty-thirty vision plan is Waterloo Elevate Housing. And so we've been trying to make sure that it can be housing, no matter where you're at, within this community, you start to see some type of life and activity. So thank you for your diligence, and I'm hoping we can all be there tomorrow. So thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Larry Stummey. I live at one-zero-zero-eight Lois Lane, Waterloo. The Waterloo-Cedar Falls problems and concerns that Dr. Blackwell and I have been bringing to your attention these past months are real, not made up for personal or political reasons. The disparity between black and white citizens in our community is based on hard facts and research. Scientific research has shown that of the three, over three-hundred-and-eighty urban areas in the country, Waterloo is one of the worsts based on housing, based on wealth, based on unemployment. These are important issues we brought to you. Last week, however, the Iowa Department of Health released another scientific finding about our Waterloo-Cedar Falls communities. We learned that the citizens of Iowa and Kentucky have the highest rate of cancer in the country, and residents of Waterloo, Iowa have the highest rate in Iowa. Some of the reasons for finding this include our industrial history of manufacturing plants located in neighborhoods. And I couldn't help but think of the twenty-three acres of the abandoned manufacturing site out on Fourth Street that is there full of poison. These are huge and real problems. They require coordinated approach. An effective response will cost millions of dollars to correct, including, I hope, reparations to the citizens who were victims of the Ethnical Act. The partners to deal with that should include the affected citizens, the best academic minds on the medical, scientific, and industrial part, government leaders, and I was happy to hear that the county is also interested in working with you to solve the problems, and also the business and industries. However, I do have a concern with the, with doing these, dealing with these problems as it comes from the cooperation with the state of Iowa. The state has, the leadership of the state recently has shown a reluctance to deal with the problems of the urban poor. Last year, the governor cut off over two-hundred-million dollars of money that should have gone to poor people. There are state laws where the state has diverted money from school, public schools, and given it to private schools. Public schools are required to receive and help all these students. These private schools are not so required. The elimination of the, and the fight against the DEA and the, all these things. Please band together with your cohorts in government to solve these problems.
I'm Michael Blackwell. I live in Cedar Falls. Since I arrived in Iowa, I discovered the numerous and significant racial disparities in the area. Needless to say, I was well aware of such disparities in major places across the country. But of course, hope always brings eternal. After participating in and often leading nonprofit agencies to help the poor generally, and people of color specifically, locally and statewide, and in other cities, I observed the ubiquitous institutional racism in structures, policies, processes, and services. Over my twenty-eight years here in the Cedar Valley, these injustices, inequalities, and inequities have largely maintained. What does this reality tell me? Here locally and across the state, we need masses of people seriously to come together to reduce the stark racial disparities that stymie, stultify, and suppress the attainment of a better quality of life for certain categories of people. City governments are essential in this understaking. As a member of many institutional strategic plans, I know that the vision statement is what the organization will be like at the end date, hopefully. Often, it's a dream. The mission statement, strategic goals, and objectives need to be substantive, practicable, and transformative to be effective, constantly reexamined and through management, teams, performance evaluations, quantitative and qualitative assessments, and so forth. Many, if not most, plans are unsuccessful because they are not assiduously prosecuted and transparently executed and communicated. As the esteemed scholar and preacher Howard Thurman once said, "I'm tired of sailing my little boat far inside the harbor bar. I'd rather go out where the big ships float,
The number-one cause of accidental death for children one to four is fatal drowning. The number-two behind automobile accidents for children's five through fourteen is fatal drowning. I don't advocate for the removal of swimming pools, unlike the City of Waterloo. I believe that access to swimming pools and education about swimming and CPR is how we lower these numbers. It was mentioned about the twenty-four acres formerly known as Chamberlain, and we took away a swimming pool out there. We know what the demographics of that neighborhood is. I have felt that it is a complete injustice not to have neighborhood access to a public swimming pool there for the people that live out there. I think that is just another example of the continuing trend towards disparity in this community. I came to speak about the upcoming election tomorrow. Encourage everyone to vote, whoever it is. I watched the last meeting, and I heard generic praise for this council up here from people. It's interesting to see who gets money from the city and who they support, whose organizations get money from the city and who they support. I'm not supporting any income, and I'm not endorsing anyone in this election. I'm very disappointed by the legacy civil rights folks and their silence on the matter of voting in this community. I am very disappointed in the assault that's taken place on the First Amendment in this community, the assault that's taken place on the Sixth Amendment, right to speedy trial. I don't see the civil rights leaders standing up for that either. The reason that we have civil rights is that they be applied to everyone even when we don't like the people that they're being applied to. And they're not to be denied just because the people aren't with the in-people that are in power. To subvert our ideals for expediency and for temporary majorities is not a lasting parlay. Eventually, somebody else will get into power that we don't like. And if they don't adhere to the civil rights, the constitutional rights of people, the same way that when people are in that we did like, we are in a mess, and it becomes chaotic. We must, must preserve these integral rights. We must look out for everyone. When we talk about equity and inclusion, we must be talking about everyone all the time and not just when it's convenient, and not just when we can save a few dollars by putting in a splash pad instead of a swimming pool. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council that?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Matt Carpenter again, five-eighteen Jefferson Street for Carpenter's Diner. Just want to publicly thank the support that I've had the last three weeks. I see a lot of familiar faces here that have been in, and their families. Also, the support of the City Hall, Greg Allhelm and all his workers and the Fire Department was nice, so thank you.
All right. Welcome back. All right. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on non-agenda-related items? Going a second time, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I would like to encourage folks to vote tomorrow, regardless of who you vote for. As a high school government teacher, we know that voting is a behavior that we should all continue to do because it's how we express ourselves. And we are very, very fortunate to live in a country where most of the time, we have a peaceful transition of power because folks recognize when they lost. And so I am looking forward to seeing tomorrow's results, and I want to wish everyone who is on the ballot, because I know it takes a lot of work, the very, very best of luck.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I just again want to thank you for your public comments. We are hearing you. Some of you, I will be reaching out to you and we'll talk about some of these issues.
All right. And in addition, sorry.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to address development agreements. And I think when a person or developer comes into town and they come before planning and zoning, and we have, we work with planning and zoning, that comes before the council. They go to Board of Adjustments, it comes before the council. Their development comes before the council, as well as the incentives that we give them. I would like, as a council, I think we should be informed when those development agreements fall through, at the very least, so that we know that that's no longer happening. And case in point is the Kmart building and the storage facility. And it's not just that one. I mean, the data mining center off of Shalas. I just think when the council goes through all of this and approves this, when a developer backs out, I'd like to know why they backed out, if we can get that information. Is it something that was a failure on their part? Is it something that we didn't address to make it right for them? And I just believe that, I hope the rest of the city council feels the same way, but I truly believe we should at least be informed when that happens and why.
Point taken. Thank you. And just really quickly, if you have an opportunity, November ninth as well, this is State of the City, and also the unveiling of the Sullivan Plaza Memorial. It's at four o'clock at the Waterloo Convention Center. So if you have the opportunity to be there, we greatly appreciate seeing some of your faces as well. So that's, and to echo the comments, please get out and vote. We'd much appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
You go ahead.
No, I'm not going to close just yet.
I have something to say, too.
Okay. So if you live in Church Road neighborhood, on November tenth, we are having Church Road light up, and we basically want you to just turn on your porch lights, turn on your sidewalk lights, whatever lights you have around your home. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I lost my voice. Whatever lights you have around your home, we want you to turn them on because we want to try to get our neighborhood as lit as possible, just so we can better gauge how much lighting we actually need in Church Road. And then also, I planned on sending you some flowers. I wanted to say, we lost two incredible people, which would be India Johnson and Jim Walsh prior to this council meeting. So I just wanted to send love and strength to their families and just say that we appreciate your family member for the contributions that they made in our community. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just two things. So first thing, again, congratulations, Matt and Carpenter. It's awesome to have that restaurant back downtown. If you don't know, I'm a very big supporter of downtown and want to make sure that we continue to push downtown in the direction that it's going. Something that's really exciting is the convention center looks great. Advantages, we're getting a lot of people downtown. The disadvantages is we're getting a lot of people downtown. So parking is getting a little congested on the streets. So if you're going to a convention center event, I would ask if you could use our parking garage. We have a phenomenal parking garage that's attached to the convention center, giving you a chance to walk from there directly to the center. That way, we can still have some parking available for people who want to go to Carpenter's Restaurant or would want to go to other restaurants in the area as we continue to build our amazing downtown. I'm really happy about that. Good problem to have. Second thing, thank you for those that attended my ward meeting this past weekend where we spoke about internet, got some information. I did post a short clip on Facebook for some of the information that the director of Waterloo Fiber talked about at the meeting. Our next meeting will not be the final Saturday of the month because that's Thanksgiving weekend. Instead, it will be the first Saturday of December, which I believe is December second, at noon in this room, and it will be specifically on Burns Park since that is in Ward One. So if you are not aware, that's going to be redone. So if you want to know more about Burns Park and the reconstruction, please come to that meeting on December second. Thank you.
You could have held it at Burns Park. Sorry.
That's not a bad, that's not a bad idea. Maybe I'll have it at Burns Park.
You want to save him a trip. You know, just talk to Mr. Hudding. He may know someone, know someone that may have a key to the clubhouse where you're doing. I think golf is still open, but.
Might have one, might have. So we'll talk.
It's a thought, but you don't have to do it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close public comments.
Motion been made with second. All in favor?
Aye.
Public comments closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of one A-one bills payment in the amount of six million, six-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-nineteen dollars and fifty-five cents.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Counsel? Madam, that's an electronic vote. Please cast your vote. All right. So let's do a.
Got it.
Okay, you got it. It's on.
It's like magic.
All right. That passed unanimously, our consent agenda. Could someone take?
We have some appointments.
We have some appointments out of the, so first appointment is Andrew Bedard, chosen for the Treatment Operations Foreman, and also Amanda Simmons to the marketing, being the Marketing Development Manager, and Brandon Alvarado, the Design Digital Arts Manager, and both in the Culture and Arts Department, and all pending pre-employment things they have to do. So are any of you here? Please stand. All right. Please stand. All right. Thank you so much for joining the team. All right. Thank you so much. You get to stay for the entire council meeting. What a great, great. All right. Let me see, any board appointments? No, we're good. All right. Could someone take number one, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Anyone? Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and that's for the reallocation of unspent proceeds of the general obligation bond series two-zero-two-two-B in an amount not to exceed three-hundred-thousand dollars.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any comments on file, or is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on the agenda?
No comments on file.
Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I would like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I would like to adopt a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action and approving the reallocation of certain unspent proceeds of the general obligation bond series two-zero-two-two-B of the City of Waterloo, Iowa.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Counsel questions? All right. That is an electronic vote. Counsel, please cast your preference. All right. That has been approved unanimously for number one. Could someone take number two, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and that's for fiscal year 2024 Burns Aquatic Center contract number ten-seventy-seven.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on the aquatic center? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I move to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I move to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid documents, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Counsel questions? That is an electronic vote.
I'm going to have to do a roll call. Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton-Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I move to receive, file, and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk, please read the bids.
Our estimate for the project was seven million, four-hundred-thousand dollars. Our first bidder was Larson Construction Company Incorporated of Independence, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their total bid amount was seven million, seven-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand, thirty-three dollars and thirty cents. Alternate one was twenty-eight thousand dollars. Alternate two was deduction of twelve thousand dollars, and alternate three was a deduction of eighteen thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars. Our second bidder was Peters Construction Corporation of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their total bid amount was six million, nine-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and sixty-two cents. Alternate one was fifty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars, ninety-three cents. Alternate two was a deduction of four thousand, sixty dollars, and alternate three was a deduction of thirty-four thousand, thirty-seven dollars. Our next bidder and our final bidder was Wooddrift Construction of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their total bid amount was seven million, three-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars, or excuse me, seven million, three-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, eight-hundred dollars. Alternate one was an addition of fifty-four thousand dollars. Alternate two was a deduction of seven thousand, five-hundred dollars, and alternate three was a deduction of fifty thousand dollars.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I move to adopt a resolution approving award of bid to Peters Construction Corporation of Waterloo, Iowa with a base bid of six million, nine-hundred-and-ninety-three, eight-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and sixty-two cents, and alternate number one at fifty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars and ninety-three cents for a total bid of seven million, fifty-three thousand, seventy-eight, fifty-five, thirty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. Approving the contract bond and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the fiscal year 2024 Burns Aquatic Center contract number ten-seventy-seven, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'm just extremely excited about this phase of the project since it's in Ward One, so I'm really excited to see this great project happening. And I'm also excited to see it come so far under budget. So great job, Director Hudding and Mayor, for finding a bid that's just so far under budget. It's fantastic to see this. Thank you.
Yeah, it was definitely not, no shave in November. But we, how many board members do we have here? Any Leisure Services Board members? So we want to thank all of your efforts and your leadership as well. We couldn't have done it without them as well. And there are, we just hope it stays there, right? So we're going to do a roll call vote for this because Kelly's mouse has got caught in a trap.
And I'm struggling. Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton-Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and that's for the request by IPE ten-thirty-one REV two-seventy-nine LLC Cardinal Construction to rezone approximately two-point, two-point-four-eight acres from C-dash-P Planned Commercial District, B-dash-P Business Park District, and R-dash-four, R-dash-P Planned Residence District to C-dash-P Planned Commercial District located at nine forty-five Tower Park Drive.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this development on the agenda? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and that's for a request by the City of Waterloo to vacate approximately two-point-four-three acres of excess right-of-way along the south side of West Sand Martin Drive between Bankers Boulevard and Hurst Drive.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Counsel questions?
Mr. Mayor, this is, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
This is just cleaning up some zoning because that parcel was sitting on three different zonings. So I'm glad that it came through planning and zoning, and we're finally getting this cleaned up.
All right. Thank you. Roll call vote.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton-Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Um, roll call vote.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number four, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and that's for a request by the city of Waterloo to vacate approximately one point four three acres of excess right of way along the south side of West Sand Martin Drive between Bankers Boulevard and Hurst Drive.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on the agenda? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and the recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I would like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance approving a request by the city of Waterloo to vacate approximately one point four three acres of excess right of way located along the south side of West Sand Martin Drive between Bankers Boulevard and Hurst Drive, subject to easements and restrictions of record.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Counsel? Uh, this is a roll call vote again.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I would like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yeah.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, that passed. Uh, number five, please. Anyone?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and that's for the request for the sale and conveyance of city-owned property to M and M B Legacy L L C in the amount of one dollar with a phased development and minimum assessment agreement in the amount of two hundred sixty-five thousand dollars and zero cents for the construction of a five thousand square foot industrial building and a four thousand square foot future expansion located south of twenty-three thirty G T Drive.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to, uh, this item on the agenda? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located south of twenty-three thirty G T Drive to M and M B Legacy L L C in the amount of one dollar and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Counsel, any questions, comments?
I have a couple.
Sir?
Uh, I was gonna ask Noel how many acres this is that we're dealing for a dollar.
All right, Mr. Anderson.
I, I couldn't find it, that's why.
Is it not in there?
No.
Obviously, he can't either. Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. I believe it's right near one acre, um, in size, but I will verify that, um, after the meeting. I'm pretty sure it's close to really, really close to one acre. Can you immediately get that answer to them after? I can get it in a few minutes here, actually.
So, how, how many jobs will this create? Cause I know we're giving five years at fifty percent.
Building right now, so we're not aware of the, an exact company going in there or job numbers, but we can report that once he gets it rented out.
Okay, because it only showed like three parking places, two regular parking and a handicapped and the stuff you gave us.
Correct. They, that's all that they showed at this time.
Okay. So we don't know how many jobs right now?
We do not.
Okay.
All right. All right, uh, any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a development and minimum assessment agreement with M and M E Legacy L L C for the construction of a five thousand square foot building and future four thousand square foot expansion located east of twenty-three thirty G T Drive and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Counsel, any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, could someone take, um, one, two, one, two, and, uh, three, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Bowzen?
Thank you. I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the Cedar Valley Sportsplex facility rental rate schedule effective November seventh, twenty twenty-three. Number two is adopting a resolution approving a form of contract and advertising agreement with Waterloo Sportsplex. And number three is adopting a resolution approving amendment number two to the agreement with Strand Associates Inc. of Madison, Wisconsin, originally executed on December eighth, twenty twenty-two, to amend the completion date from July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three to June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Is there anyone with questions on these three items? Eric, you moved. I thought you were about to get up. I'm like, if anybody has questions, not you. We're... Yes, sir.
Gonna get by free tonight, didn't you?
Everything has a cost.
David Drier, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. This is for number one. Um, I looked farther into the computer and I see that the fiscal year twenty-three income and projected increase, but I don't note anything about how much it's costing us to operate the Sportsplex. That would be an interesting thing to know. Are we making money there or are we not? I'd like to see the actual facts, the actual numbers, um, tonight, tomorrow. I have to be back here at six o'clock in the morning to take your votes, so I'm gonna leave after this.
Oh, we want you to stay around with us.
I need some sleep. It's gonna be a long day tomorrow.
Feel you on that. Um, Paul, do you wanna talk to him now or you wanna give him a call at five forty-five A M?
I'll probably be asleep then. Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. Um, the Sportsplex, uh, ever since the end of the pandemic, whenever that was, has been profitable and that's a, I don't know if that's the actual word to use for a government facility, but our revenues have exceeded expenditures. We're projecting for the upcoming year somewhere in the hundred and fifty thousand dollar range of revenues in excess of expenditures. Things can change, but that's, that's our estimate.
You just received a thumbs up from Mr. Drier.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you.
All right.
No amount of business to make much, but to reduce my taxes somehow is great. See you tomorrow?
Me?
Well, anybody, if you won't here tomorrow, cause I'll be here.
Who's voting? Okay, Ms. Wilder will be here. Make sure you bring some don- donuts.
Donuts?
Yes.
Oh, that sounds like bribery. I'm not bringing anything.
You're not on the ballot.
Well, I know, but y'all are.
Just saying, life is a campaign. All right, uh, counsel questions on one, two, three?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Not a question, just a comment. Uh, I've started going to work out at the Cedar Valley Sportsplex over the past two weeks.
I noticed. Look at his shoulders.
What? They hurt. They hurt, but it's a phenomenal, uh, facility, so it makes sense that we would be revenue positive because it's a great place. So, highly recommend you get a, a subscription or, you know, join and go work out and swim. Could have a nice swimming pool and you play basketball. I, I love it. It, except the pain. The pain isn't fun, but everything else is great. So, please come and, uh, join me, work out. If you see me there, say hi.
All right. Hey, Paul, Paul, is there a massage therapist there now?
Yes.
So, hey.
There you go, John.
Yeah, no, 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 it's too much, no.
I mean, you might as well work it out.
Oh, boy, we'd be real that ship.
Says one that's always injured or surgeries, huh? All right, uh, anyone else? Sir?
Um, I do have a question, um, just regarding number one. Is there a different schedule for, uh, nonprofits? Or is there a, a discount for nonprofits as far as renting space?
We have just the one schedule.
Okay.
Uh, we do meet with our partners. So, for example, Waterloo Schools, we work back and forth. We've used their facilities over the years. They've used ours. So, yeah, oftentimes with, uh, a partner, we'll have a reduced rate that we just negotiate. Um, but this is, this is our standard rate that applies to just about anyone unless they're a, a active partner with leisure services. Thank you.
Paul, on another note, um, if a person may not have the same means, what, what do we have for them?
Correct, and, and that's not so much for the rental rates, but for,
Right.
for access to our programs, we do have the key card program. So, if, if a family would qualify for the key card, then they get a percentage off, a significant percentage off of all the programs.
All right, thank you. All right, counsel, any other questions? All right, uh, roll call vote again.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, can someone take, um, four, five, and six, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the following resolutions. First is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with H R Green in the amount not to exceed fourteen thousand, three hundred dollars for preparation of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four E P A Brownfields Program, multi-purpose grant application and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Uh, next is to approve a resolution approving amendment number one to the professional services agreement with A E Com of Waterloo, Iowa, originally executed on July eighteen, twenty twenty-two, to amend the completion date from December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three to April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four in conjunction with the fiscal year twenty twenty-three C I P Phase I V A Three Contract Number Ten Sixty-three and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And six is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with, uh, Far Graham in amount not to exceed six thousand, five hundred dollars to complete a survey for the creation of two parcels and two easement descriptions on the Tech Works campus and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Are there any questions about these three items? Counsel? Uh, roll call vote again.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Counsel, did you want me to take seven separately?
I do.
Yes.
All right, number seven.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the termination of lease agreement with Verb Kabachuk L L C, originally approved by the council on May twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen for the conclusion of business operation for the property located at three twenty-seven West Third Street.
Second. That motion has been made with a second. Mr. Bowzen? Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Is there anyone in the audience that have questions? Mr. Bowzen?
I, I just had some, some questions and, and I just tried to assess where the ball got dropped because it, it, it clearly states in the lease agreement that the, the rent has to be paid by the first of each month, prior to the first of each month or the first of each month. And when you add the, the forgiveness of seventy-seven thousand, uh, one hundred and sixty-three dollars, it basically equates to we haven't collected rent on this property in over two years. Um, I have a real, I have a real issue with that and I have an issue forgiving it. Uh, especially with some of the, the communications I've had back and forth with Mr. Anderson. We, he just handed us prior to the meeting some bullet points on how he came up with the forgiveness figure. I'm happy to find out that we're gonna recoup all the property taxes that are owed. Um, because the city in the last week, week's bill payments paid fifty-five thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars for past property taxes that haven't been paid since the second half of the twenty-one, twenty-two tax year. And tha- and that's upsetting because it clearly states in the lease agreement that, that they're responsible to pay all property taxes and special assessments throughout, throughout the lease here. So, we ended up paying penalties and, on, on this also or interest. Part of the, the forgiveness of the seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars is that we're going to give them a credit of fifty thousand dollars for a walk-in cooler. And I asked Mr. Anderson how we came up with that figure and, and he said that they sent one of the building maintenance guys over and they said it's worth fifty thousand dollars. Well, if you talk to people that deal with used coolers, they'll tell you it's, it's worth ten cents on the dollar. So, I don't know how we came up with the fifty thousand dollars. Uh, the credit for the lease closure during COVID of twenty-two thousand dollars for the two months that, that it was, that the state closed us. Uh, back then, it would have been in March and April of twenty twenty and based on their sliding scale, they were only paying a thousand dollars a month to lease at that time. But we're gonna give them credit for twenty-two thousand dollars, uh, in, in this. I just have, have a real issue with this whole process of forgiving the entire seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-three and I'm just happy we're gonna recoup the, the, uh, property taxes.
Counsel, any other comments? Well, I, I, actually, I, I certainly understand, uh, where you're coming from, good sir. I know, um, I don't know after COVID, um, how, you know, no one knew the pandemic would happen. We know that, but I don't know how much they actually recovered after that because the rent was low, uh, but the amount of revenue that was coming into, uh, the facility was low, uh, as well. And so, um, we did work. I think, uh, we work with, we work with the younger arena folks, uh, to try to come up with some level of compromise, didn't we? Uh, the Blackhawks, we didn't... Rent? Well, okay. But I, I don't know. They have been impacted by COVID. Um, I mean, if there was a number, counsel, I, yeah. Yeah, so folks that had our, uh, facilities, so I don't know. We sat down and met with them, tried to, um, move forward with the relationship so that we can get someone else in there, um, sooner than later. And you're right, uh, it's a lot of money. Uh, but I, I don't know if they ever recovered from one of our facilities after, uh, COVID. So, they are asking for, uh, some grace from, uh, the city. Um, but, um, yeah, it's just, uh, it's been tough there, so.
If, if no one else has.
I just had a question. Do we have any, uh, planned, um, I guess partnerships for that space? Or, um, are we in conversation with, um, partners for that space going forward?
Um, I think there was about two or three, um, um, different folks that were, folks but companies that were interested, uh, in being there, uh, that reached out to planning and, uh, I think a couple of them reached out directly to me. Uh, but the biggest thing, uh, we need to move forward from these folks too, but there has been interest. Mr. Bowzen?[1606.74] Mr., I'm sorry, he hadn't spoken yet.
This just to me, when we first had, when I first joined counsel, I spoke about this particular building with Mr. Anderson, had a good conversation about it. And back then, my mindset was we should not ever sell this building. This kinda shows me, it kinda changes my view a little, but it makes me wonder, should we even own it? Should we have the responsibility of dealing with this building and having to lease it? Or should we just give it to, sell it to a private owner? So I think it's something we should consider, or at least think about pros and cons of doing that, just so we don't have to worry about these lease agreements or being a lease-er or having to deal with this kind of stuff.
Leasee.
Leasee.
I think. Leaseor.
Leaseor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, you know, the challenge we have with that, which is not a bad idea at all, the challenge we have that's so close to our public market.
Right.
You know, it's, the WDC in partnership has spent a lot of money on that entire area through our Vision Iowa thing. So we have our RIA, as the River Loop Association runs, you know, portion of that property and just a lot of investment right now. It's, you know, utilities. There's a lot of things that we need to continue to work on in there to make it feasible. But you're right, they came up short and asked for some grace on this, so. So, Mr. Bosin?
And again, just to reiterate, I, I don't know how we, we allowed this to go two years, number one. That's, that's unacceptable in my book, but, and I asked Mr. Anderson who the principal investors are, and I'm not gonna name them tonight in the council, but we've done development agreements with these people. And, and Mr. Anderson, in his email to me, said that we haven't done development agreements with these developers since Verb, which we have, we have done, because we entered into development agreements for Edison School, for, for Baltimore Fields, for Lincolnshire, or Lincoln Way, with one of these developers, and with, with incentives and, and giving land away. So we have continued to invest, but we're not getting it reciprocated back to us. So I hope it never happens again. I don't know who's responsible here at the city that, that monitors this, this lease agreement, these lease agreements, and whether we're going to, to allow something like this to happen in the future because we're setting a bad precedence by saying, you don't have to pay us. Eventually, we're just gonna, gonna foreclose, you know. And also, we talk about, we wanna reimburse them for their loss of business during COVID. So I went through the payroll protection plan, applications for Blackhawk County and all, and the COVID relief, and I didn't find that they applied anywhere. There was a lot of places in Waterloo that got tons of money from the federal government, but I didn't see their name once to asking for relief during that time.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
What is the effect of this not passing today? Is, is this, if we, if just hypothetically speaking, if this did not pass today, would their lease still be continuing then?
Mr. Anderson.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. There is a representative of the company here if he'd like to speak as well, if, if it doesn't go through today. Obviously, you know, it's, it's been a rough ride. It was a good partnership to start out with. COVID kinda derailed a lot of things on, on not only their restaurant side, but also on their production side there. So this is our, our efforts to try and, and help them, you know, move back out of the building so we can get something else, else in there, which we have had inquiries on. If this doesn't pass tonight, I would imagine we'd have to go back to see what, what kind of a solution we can come up with then that would be different.
Thank you.
Mr. Footman, would you like to say anything, or? Not to put you on the spot. Is there anyone, is there a representative out here that maybe wants to, please come to the podium?
I could just let you know that.
Can you state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Andy Footman. We're down at, you know, three twenty-seven West Third Street. We did apply for the Payroll Protection Act relief, and we got some, but all of that was based on previous year's sales, and we opened in August of twenty twenty. So, and we haven't operated in there for quite some time. Is there anything else I should mention while I'm up here?
No, just, counsel's trying to decide, you know, why should they relieve some of this and your communication?
Oh, sure. I appreciate that, and I appreciate everybody's perspective, and God knows, I'm not super pumped to be standing here where I am. But if you're worried that we're not losing enough money, I don't think you need to worry about that. But anyway, thanks for all the work you've done to put this together, and I appreciate it if we could close this chapter and keep working.
Thank you.
One last thing, sir. Mr. Mayor. Go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Andy, I, I completely respect you and what you've been able to do in being a small business owner. It's definitely not easy. So I, I can feel where you're coming from right now, so I, I definitely agree with giving you grace because we all need it sometimes.
As far as the, the lease goes, we have a termination of lease agreement giving these the grace. But also, the original lease agreement says if, if they fail to make a payment within so many days, the lease is terminated. If they fail to be in operation for over fifteen straight days, the lease is terminated. So the lease is over. It just depends if whether this council's gonna, gonna forgive seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars worth of rent. That's all I've got.
So if the lease was terminated, then it was terminated back then, then, right? So.
No. It's, it's when we decided to terminate it.
All right. All right, counsel, you've heard from all of you with your questions. You've heard from the developer and heard from Mr. Anderson. Madam Clerk, this is a roll call vote.
Mr. Bosin?
No.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
No.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take eight, nine, and ten, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the following resolutions. Number eight is a resolution approving a subordination agreement with FDPWTC LLC in favor of the Chandler Group LLC pertaining to obligations under the Waterloo Mortgage Agreement dated January fifteenth, twenty sixteen, and record January fifteenth, twenty sixteen, with the Blackhawk County Recorder's Office for a project located at two fifty Westfield Avenue, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number nine is a resolution approving amendment number six to the development agreement with Deer Creek Development LLC, originally executed October thirteenth, two thousand and six, to make an additional annual payment for the acquisition of Lot Four Greenbelt Center Platte Number Seven, City of Waterloo, Iowa, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number ten is a resolution approving the real estate purchase agreement with Deer Creek Development for the city acquisition of land located northeast of three-three-one-five Titan Trail in the amount of two hundred eighty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars, plus up to five thousand dollars in closing costs, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone that would like to comment on these three items? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
On number ten, and my communication with Mr. Anderson, we don't have a client for this yet. It appears Mr. Youngblood approached us to buy the land. It's close to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars an acre. I, I don't know if, if we wanna push this through and, and buy, buy this land and just have it sit. I mean, hopefully, we can turn it quickly, but I, I hate putting the cart before the horse. We bought, spent three hundred thousand dollars and bought a sand volleyball court next to, next to Cadillac Lanes, and it's still a sand volleyball court. And we have no, no, no.
Sand volleyball and, nice little spike, you stand.
Community Planning Development Director, I was a high jumper when I was skinnier, so I could play sand volleyball back then. So, so nine and ten are actually linked.
Good, good job, both of you.
I envisioned Dave trying to jump and hit a volleyball, and it tickled me.
Climb the net. Nine and ten are related. So our, we did a similar amendment just to the north, where the small office building and the small warehouse is going in right now. We had two projects go on that land. Kinda similarly there, back when, when we were looking at that, we had one of those two projects. We had the other one come along pretty quickly once it, once we took acquisition of it. So the benefit to the city on this one is if we buy this lot through the amendment process, we won't have to pay for the money all upfront. It'll just go into our annual, or biannual payments to Deer Creek that we're doing for the reimbursement, which I think is scheduled to be paid off in about two years now. So this will add another payment to that, and it, but it gets us to the land right now for quicker development, we hope.
So, I'm sorry, counsel. So, so close by, there were, they did the same thing, and then there's two, two developments happening on that site.
Correct.
Okay. And counsel? Mrs. Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number one?
Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance bending the City of Waterloo traffic code by adding subsection fifty-five A, Hummingbird Circle, the north side, the north side of the fifteen-hundred block, sixty feet in an easterly direction from Mockingbird Lane to section five-five-three. No parking here to corner as follows. Fifty-five A, Hummingbird Circle, the north side of the fifteen-hundred block, sixty feet in an easterly direction from Mockingbird Lane.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone with questions on this item? Counsel? Roll call vote, Mrs. Clerk.
Let's switch it up. Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I would like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number two?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to receive, file, and consider and pass for the first time an ordinance, rescinding ordinance number five-six-eight-one that vacated a utility easement in the S-one Shopping Center District located east of one-one-five East Ridgeway Avenue, now addressed at one-three-five East Quigray Avenue.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this item? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Just a quick question because it, it's being vacated, or we're rescinding it because the contractor was supposed to move and didn't move. So can we get an explanation why it didn't get moved?
Eric.
Eric's coming up.
Eric used a high jump too. Look at how he. He was sitting in that seat too long.
No one else was jumping up, so I figured I'd go ahead and jump up and give it a try, so. There is a sewer line that runs within the right-of-way of Ridgway. Many years ago, when the hospital put the underground connection point in, the sewer line had to be rerouted outside of the right-of, out of the right-of-way onto their private property, and an easement was retained. When Quickstar was first looking at going to that site, they wanted that easement vacated and were going to relocate the sewer back into the right-of-way. During the initial construction, there was some disagreement as to responsibility. Quickstar thought that it was the site developer that was going to do that. The site developer did not believe that was his responsibility, so it did not get relocated. And now Quickstar is fine with continuing using the relocated, or the, the sewer that was relocated out of the right-of-way. So rescinding this action puts that easement back into place and maintains the existing sewer.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Take it slowly. All right, any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Motion's has been the rules. Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Sir?
I move to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance. Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
All right, thank you. That passed. Now, number three, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I motion to, ask that we make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance amending the City of Waterloo Code of Ordinances by amending subsection two B, Snow and Ice Removal, Section Two, Prohibitive Acts and Conditions, Chapter One, Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Ways, Title Seven, Public Ways and Properties.
Second.
All right, that motion has been made with the second. Are there questions on this item? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Just here to say that we did receive a letter of support from Main Street Waterloo for this ordinance, and I think that I've had several business owners talk about support for this particular ordinance as well, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
And to add, we, we've expanded the boundaries just a little bit. That was, that was in our council communications. The boundary stopped at Jefferson, so it didn't include the three-hundred block of Third Park, Fourth, Fifth, or Sixth. So the boundaries, I believe, now will be Franklin, Sixth Street, Washington, and First Street. So that, those, those businesses will be subjected to making sure that those sidewalks are cleaned.
All right, thank you so much. Any questions, comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
So much for changing it up.
I'll do it again.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I make the motion that we suspend the rules.
Second.
Ready? Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Mr. Bosin?
I'm so confused. Yes.
We got one more.
One more.
Gosh, apologize.
I move that we